I'd like to call the meeting to order. Everyone stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Any motion for approval of the agenda? Jeff, Matt, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? We carried 9-0. Recognition of new staff.
I'm sorry. I'm allowed one a night. So we're gonna do it a little different. In the past, we would just call out the names of our new hires and really that was it. Congratulations, say a few words. This year, the board has asked, we'd like to hear a few words from each of you on your accomplishments. What? No, I'm kidding. We want to be out of here early tonight. I am teasing. I just love seeing all those faces. Honestly, when I look out, this is like the greatest, when you see all these energetic young teachers, so happy. It's like the first day of school with the little faces when they come in, with their new sneakers and just so happy. What we're gonna do is, so Dave is going to call your name. If you can come up, and then we're gonna just stand over here. Somehow, we're gonna set it up for a picture. And then afterwards, if you could stay, because Dave will be doing, each year, we do a report about the new hires, and I won't burst his bubble, but we're gonna talk about that, and that impacts you, because recruiting is obviously a huge piece of what we do here in Dave's office in Human Resources. And I'm sure, as you know, it hasn't been easy recruiting administrators, teachers, education positions all around, so we're gonna talk to that. You might want to stay and hear that. Ten minutes. So with that, I will turn it over to Dave.
You start here. So, we have Assistant Principal, Baker High School, William Allen. We have a food service helper at Dirki, April Arquette. A custodial worker, Baker, Alyssa Benight. Special education teacher at Reynolds, Nicole Siobhan. A teaching assistant at Reynolds, Lauren Dom. Teaching assistant at Van Buren, Carolyn DeSpain. A math RIT teacher, Ray Middle School, Kevin Hagan. Social worker, Dirki, Lauren Hibbard. Administrative aide, the District Business Office, Catherine Hobbs. Custodial worker for the Facilities Office, Edward Horning. A new school bus driver, Gary Johnson. Special education teacher at Palmer, Lauren Hughes. School nurse, Ray Middle School, Lynn Labarge. Typist One, Baker, Genevieve Lapointe. Music teacher at Ray, Cody Lazinger. Teaching assistant at Reynolds, Paula Malecki. School nurse, Baker, Anthony Mastrocco. English teacher, Baker, Andrew McGlynn. Career and tech teacher at Ray, Hallie McKay. Special ed teacher at Palmer, Sabrina Matt. Teaching assistant at Van Buren, Kara Metz. Science teacher, Dirki, Nicole Ozymick. New school bus driver, Bonnie Plano. Teaching assistant at McNamara, Lisa Pearson. Teaching assistant at Eldon, Veronica Fallon. English teacher at Baker, Alicia Piazek. Special ed teacher at McNamara, Jessica Purding. Latin teacher at Baker, Colleen Rice. Teaching assistant at Reynolds, Stephanie Rozick. Special education teacher at Palmer, Danielle Rofala. Teacher aide at Reynolds, Erin Schrader. Speech teacher at Ray, Michelle Seber. Special ed teacher at Eldon, Amanda Spleddy. Custodian at Reynolds, George Stone. Food service helper at Dirki, Inez Thomas. Transportation dispatcher, Michael Tierney. Let me see, sorry guys. School nurse at Baker, Stephanie Toratelli. Forgot that right. French teacher at Dirki, Kara Torto. Teaching assistant at McNamara, Amanda Tessavanas. Tessavanas. Custodial worker at Reynolds, Michael Vesalu. Count clerk in the business office, Daisy Volmer. Speech teacher at Eldon and Palmer, Lauren Ward. And the sixth grade teacher at Ray, Danielle White.
I feel like there was a lot more names than was perfect, because Joan just whispered over to me. So next year, so we get everybody to come, I think she's gonna donate a car, so that people come, it's gonna be raffled off, right? Oh, I misunderstood. I'm sorry. Yeah, right. Okay, so before Dave does his report, I want to say basically what I said at New Teacher Orientation, and I know, you know, not everybody's there, but I want to say that because with the board here, don't forget, I mean, you guys are all smiling, happy, and I've seen many of you as I went through the buildings, never change, be happy. Remember, it's a job. Take care of you and take care of those kids. That's it. Okay? Everything else falls into place. If you love kids and you care, everything else takes place. Do not come to work and walk on eggshells and be afraid, you know, this big bad administrator's coming. Who cares? All right? Who, honestly, nobody's perfect. I make mistakes every single day. It's okay. If you don't make the mistakes, that's a problem. Just go in, be confident. Baldenville is one of the hardest places. I, if I had an interview, I would not be sitting where you are. There is no way. I wouldn't have made it, I wouldn't even got a phone call. Baldenville is very rigorous. It's very difficult. The fact that you're here, like I told you, is awesome. And there's a reason, you know, all the administrators in the room, yeah, that, you know, teaching, doing the, you know, lessons, right? The standards, all that, that's a piece. That's a little piece of what we do, because we know you're smart, bright people, those things you can learn. But we can't teach you how to love kids and smile and be happy and take care of those little ones. That we can't teach. And every one of you have that, and never forget that. That's the most important thing. Just take care of the little ones. But you gotta take care of you first, because what good are you if you don't take care of you? And I mean that, because we get caught up, we work 24 hours a day, and weekends, and lesson plans, and all those things. Take a break. Don't forget about your family. Do those things. And don't stress. Just go to your administrator, go to a colleague, if you don't know. But be happy and take care of the little ones. All right? Congratulations, welcome guys. I wish you the best. Thank you.
So just to piggyback off what Mr. McDonald has said, we know that when we have new staff here in Baldenville, that we actually have the best staff possible that we could have hired. I know that you've all been through the interview process and you realize now how rigorous it is. Not an easy process to get through, but once you've made it through, you know you're one of the top people in Central New York. So, with that being said, I'd like to just kind of go over some of, a little bit of information about some of our new hires. The district's new hires have earned undergraduate degrees from 12 different colleges and universities. These colleges and universities include Oswego, excuse, SUNY Oswego, SUNY Cortland, SUNY Albany, SUNY Buffalo, SUNY Brockport, SUNY Plattsburgh, SUNY Pottstam, Lemoine College, Colgate University, Syracuse University, Duquesne University, and West Virginia University. In addition to that, the completion of a graduate degree is a prerequisite for the attainment of a professional certification. The graduate degree programs of the following institutions of higher learning are represented among the district's new educators. Again, Oswego, Buffalo, Geneseo, Plattsburgh, Pottstam, Syracuse University, Niagara University, Union College, University of North Georgia, University of Wisconsin, and West Virginia University. In addition to the aforementioned information, it is also important to point out the average grade point averages of our new educators. The average GPA for undergraduate degrees was 3.4, and the average GPA for our graduate degrees was 3.79. It is also important to note that out of 18 new educators and special area staff, 15 of them have completed their graduate coursework. I would also like to mention that of the 18 new hires of educators, 44% of us come with up to five years experience of, excuse me, of teaching experience. 11% come to Baldenville with six to 10 years of teaching experience, and 44% of our new hires have 11-plus years of teaching experience. In conclusion, the Baldenville School District is proud that it continues to attract substantial number of applicants for teaching employment, and that has resources to expand the scope of this search to our outstanding educators. The district building a program of administrators, excuse me, the district's building and program administrators are committed to making staffing decisions that reflect the evolving needs of our students and community, and we will continue, as a Human Resource Department, to expand our, excuse me, our recruitment to capture a broader geographic area in the coming years. So that being said, again, we are very proud as a district to have all you here, and, you know, good luck and continued success. Thanks.
We're gonna be moving on now, but I, you know, you're welcome to stay. I'm sure you have other things that you would rather do, but we'll be moving on to the rest of the meeting, and congratulations. So we have correspondence and board activities in the meetings that were held. The Board of Ed had cabinet, Ed Cabinet had retreat at the Farrar-Fierrenza Law Firm on the 9th of September. Anybody want to say anything? Okay, well, it was, I think it was a very productive retreat, and we learned a lot. September 12th, Dirki Junior High, open house, 6 to 8.
I was at the open house. It ran smoothly. I think I got in trouble three times for being in a hallway when classes were in session, but, no, everything went well. I mean, it's amazing how the building is just a square with numbered hallways, and you still get lost between every class, so.
And I'd add on that, and I don't know if I missed it last year, but the, in the library, they had like an activities fair thing, so the parents could learn about the things that the kids could do, that the kids don't bring home and tell the parents. So if that was new this year, it was a great addition. If it was there last year and I missed it, then keep it going. But, it was a, it was nice to see. Hopefully, they can do something like that at Ray for the upcoming open houses, too.
Better get going.
We have September 16th, the Facilities Committee meeting at Dirki. I know, Jim, do you want to report?
There we go. Yeah, we had a pretty thorough meeting. We went through the progress of all the different projects that were going on in the district. Everything seems to be pretty well on schedule, the bus garage being the major one right now, and they're pretty much down to pouring sidewalks and paving and putting finishing touches on the structure, and it looks great. Denise and I went on a tour a few weeks ago, and it looked great then, I'm sure, and a lot of progress has made, been made since then, so I hope everybody will get a chance to see it fairly soon. It's really an amazing facility, and it's gonna serve us, I'm sure, for many years. Also, we talked about the, putting the, I guess out forbid is what you would say, but when we get to our, down to our construction management and our, for our architects, putting this up again, and seeing, you know, who wants to apply for those positions, and maybe we'll stick with who we've got, but it's a good idea to open it up and keep people from becoming complacent, and see what's out there, and if we want to make any changes. But things seem to be going pretty well right now. I think we did this, what, Jamie, five years ago, you said? Yeah, and we didn't make any changes at that time, but it really seems like we're getting the proper attention and advice from our construction companies and from the cotton, I don't know why I can't say architects tonight, but the architects, and everything seems to be going quite well. We also got a little review on the status of the radio station at Baker, and it's gonna be great. It's right there where the kids walk by it every day. It seems like there's a lot more interest in it already this year, and of course, it's been updated to match the technology of today, and it's really gonna be an asset to our, to our school. Something else positive at Baker that not every other school district has, so that's a real plus, too. So we talked about a lot of things, but I think those are the highlights.
Anybody want to add anything at all? Brian or Jeff?
Yeah, I'll just add that for the board, that the RFPs for the architecture go out on the 11th, so I think it's like mid-November, well, mid-November, early December, the board will do some interviews with the applicants that have the list that's been streamed down from Jamie, and the construction management one goes out on November with them do sometime in December, I think, and then interviews would be in January. So the board will be involved in interviewing potential candidates, and we'll see if we want to change or not change, but. And then the other thing is Jamie's gonna send, all the material from today's meeting, Jamie's gonna post in the Friday letter for us, so everybody can take a look.
I was just thinking, I guess it's more, I don't know, question, comment, we have to, when are the RFP, have they been out already, are we gonna send them out? Will they be out by the time we go to school boards? Because if that hits the street, and we're at school boards, these guys are gonna, you know, they're, you're gonna have these companies coming and trying to sell themselves, and you gotta be careful with that. You don't want it, because they'll trap you into saying something, so that's gonna be tricky. So, but don't worry, I'll be with you. I'll take care of it. But no, I just caution you for that, because they will do that. They know, they'll, all these companies will know that we're looking, and they will come and try and grab a board member's ear, and then sometimes we say things, you know, I'm the most guilty, and we say things, and, oh, you know, well, Jen Petronio said, blah, 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 you know, or whatever, so we just gotta watch.
It's all right. You know, just move on, it's fine. It was, the fellow architect that...
Sorry, Matt.
Yes, you're right. The one for the architect will be going out October 11th, which is before we go to Rochester. The other one is staggered, I think it goes out in November.
But even though it goes out in November, I'm sure the word on the street is it's gonna come out, so both will know just as well, but, good point. I don't think any of us thought of that during the meeting, but, yeah. Especially in, when you're around the vendor fair or whatever, yeah, and they read Baldenville on your name plate, yeah.
I think we're gonna be doing it at Bosse's as well, so probably be hit twice as hard.
We'll just point them to you for Bosse's.
Why don't I give you some of my business cards, and you can just hand them out when somebody asks you? Talk to this guy.
That's a good idea.
I mean, really, I could do that.
Yeah.
I don't want to talk to that guy.
Yeah, that's a good one. So, ladder meetings for, the coming weeks before our next meeting, too, a lot of open houses. Student board report. You're on?
Yep. So the first weekend and a half were very successful. This past Friday, we had the first activity fair, which is when 35 clubs hosted booths in the Hall of Fame hallway, and we had students come down during their study, not their study hall, sorry, their history classes to see all the clubs that the school has to offer. It seemed very successful. For the clubs I was at, there seemed to be a significant increase in signups from previous years. Additionally, the positivity project that's been at the elementary school level has now reached the high school, and a lot of projects are being planned by Ms. Riggs, Ms. Foot, and some student members, and we're all very excited to work on some more positivity project projects. Some student concerns, there is the lunchroom frustration that some of you may have already heard about. Students are frustrated with the high school lunchroom due to the construction that has caused shorter breakfast, awkward bell, an awkward bell schedule, and less food items. The construction, however, was, is needed and cannot be stopped, so the response that I've been giving is there's plenty of space for everyone in the lunchroom, and staff is going to be working on having more breakfast items during more periods, and the bell schedule, however, it isn't ideal, it is necessary to create a fourth lunch period. The schedule and typical meals will continue next year and when construction is completed. Another concern is air conditioning. The first week and a half have been a little bit unbearable in most classrooms. This is a concern that a lot of students and staff have had for a very long time, and it's very distracting and uncomfortable for a lot of people. And for the first week and a half, that's all I have to report.
There were no requests to speak.
Okay. Approval of consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Do we have a motion? Jeff, second? Matt, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried 8-0. Leadership report.
Okay, now everybody can hear this. Okay, so leadership report, so I'm gonna start off, just, you know, really, we already heard, opening was, was awesome. It was, for me, it's like Christmas morning, you know? I just love seeing the kids. I think on opening day, for those who heard me, you know, summers are hard, because it's very lonely, you know, you're in your office doing paperwork, doing reports, and working with state and federal stuff, and, you know, that gets, that's rough, man. So I was so excited to see the staff, and staff are second, I tell them that, too. This is my second favorite day of the year, is when the staff come back. The first is when the kids are there. And I got around as much as I could to all the schools, and it's the best to have kids run up and hug you and just tell you about their summer, and there's nothing better than that. And I think we're off to a real good start. So I, it's gonna be another awesome year. I mean, just hearing the student report, positivity project, I mean, things just, I don't know, you know, but somehow Baldenville, you know, you have an idea, you kind of put it out there, like, these ladies here that are about to present to us. We had, you know, Carrie had an idea. Next thing we know, this is bigger, you know, the biggest one in the state. I mean, we have, I have people, or Carrie has people donating stuff from, I'm like, who, what company? Because I'm trying to write thank yous, and it's amazing how just something little to give back and do something for others, like positivity project, you know, what we're gonna hear from these ladies, it just blows up. It's amazing. It makes my job easy, because I just say, blah, and they take it and they run, and it's amazing. So, it's gonna be an amazing year, and I'm excited. I'm a happy man again, now that the kids are back. And, of course, these lovely ladies. So why don't we jump right into your report? I keep calling it backpack. I don't know why.
want students to feel happy and prepared for school, hence why there is Stuff the Bus. It really helps alleviate the anxiety of not having school supplies for some of these students and even alleviate anxiety of them having to go to someone on the first day and ask for supplies. Not only does it help with the students themselves and help their day, but also with the family and some of the stresses that they experience. You know, some families have to save money for supplies or have to arrange for transportation or sitters for the siblings so that they can go shopping for these supplies. And speaking of making things easier for some of our families, we added Floral Drive Park as a pickup location and also we utilized the River Knoll Community Center. These seemed like some convenient spots for some of our families to pick up the supplies. And we also added pre-packed backpacks to help move things along and also delivering backpacks and supplies to the families. To help accommodate the parents that are working during the day, we extended some of our hours into the evening hours in case they were, you know, working, obviously. In this year, we closely collaborated with our school SROs, the BTA, the Curriculum Department and Food Service to make this year's event. And, you know, in the beginning, I mentioned it being a role of the school social worker to help students be successful, but it's really the whole community that contributes to this. And I'll let my colleagues talk more about that.
So going off of what Jessica said, while we would love to take all of the credit for this labor of love for the second year, it really is a collaboration between us and a lot of departments here on campus and as well as in the community. We do not provide all of these donations. We receive them from vast different agencies as well as families. And it requires a lot of our dedication and time to plan this event, not only ourselves but our supervisor, Carrie Lamachia, she does a whole heck of a lot to help us out as well. So we did work with the Transportation Department, not only do we need a bus to stuff, they, we needed people to drive it to our locations, we needed people to help us load things on the bus. And we were also in communication with a lot of the various apartment complexes that we worked with, so River Knoll, Land Rush, et cetera, to kind of coordinate efforts. So there was a flyer that was passed around. In the past, we have had the flyers slipped under by the landlords to certain apartment, all of the apartment complexes, as well as putting them up on the websites and things like that. So we have a lot of planning that goes into this event.
Thanks. So in our first year, we had 77 donations and we assisted 180 students. This year, we had 73 donations and we assisted 247 students. We had most of our families pick up supplies at the designated locations, but we did have approximately nine deliveries outside of the scheduled days. We had five additional pickups at summer school or the district office. And just want to mention, Megan touched on this a little bit, but we did have larger donations from the Lions Club, from Ferrera Law Firm, local churches, and then the BTA did give us a $500 gift card for Staples, so that greatly helped purchase supplies. So the 247 students, that's only 4.6% of our population. So we know that there is a huge population of students and families that aren't yet tapping into this resource. So we need to look at ways to expand this program and, and we're doing that every year. According to the New York State Report Card, in the 2017-18 school year, our free and reduced lunch rate was at 29%. That was at an increase. We were at 26% the previous school year. And this is a steadily climbing rate from 2007 when we were at 13%. So the state refers to those numbers as economically disadvantaged. So we know that our families need this service despite being from Baldwinsville. So we're excited to continue growing the program. I think one of the, I mean, the best part about doing this is seeing the kids and seeing the families come and getting the hugs and not just from the kids, but from the families, too. They're incredibly appreciative. We had a family this year come and they actually donated because last year they had an economic hardship and they normally wouldn't have needed supplies, but they did last year. So this year, they're back on their feet, so they were able to come and contribute and they wanted to do that. We had another family that's living at a hotel right now due to a house fire, so they needed supplies. And this one, I was kind of like, I got on the bus and there was this grocery bag of hand soap, like 10 soft soaps. And I'm like, what, what is this, you know? And the ladies explained to me that a family came and the mom said, you know, we need to get supplies, but we want to give back and this is our way to give back. So she donated some hand soap. So I think it just speaks to the community coming together, which is really special.
And as Meredith also touched upon, there's always room for improvement, so we're clearly looking for suggestions. Some things we've thought to implement to kind of help with advertising, possibly a banner. I know when we had the big banner on the school bus looking for school bus drivers, so many people would come and say, oh, you guys are hiring school bus drivers. So I feel like that would be a really beneficial way to get to a lot of people in the community, a big banner. Working on communicating the information to the families regarding the collection and the distribution prior to the end of the school year rather than waiting till summer. I think that, you know, continuing to sort of reinforce this is when we're going to do it will help people kind of mark it on their calendars and/or be more mindful of donating. I know, you know, there were families I talked to who just struggled because they were either going on vacation or something during the time we did collection, so just having more periods of time for collecting. Again, considering collection dates and opportunities for families to donate before the end of the school year and then collaborating with students, especially at the secondary level, we see so many items go unused and get wasted in the garbage cans at the end of the school year for locker cleanout. I have students helping me kind of pick through and grab the things that are unused that are in good shape. So working with the students and the teachers prior to that time where, you know, all the secondary buildings can gather the unused material or the gently-used things and put them aside so we can utilize them.
We also want to take a moment to just express our extreme gratitude and appreciation for all the support, all the help, the volunteers, the donations. The gift card from the BTA came in handy like split second in the middle of distribution. Carrie had to run to Staples. You know, thinking about this big bus with all of these supplies, you know, facilities helping pack and move things. We had a great deal of support from our administrators, getting on the bus, offering us coffee, jumping in to help move supplies, to help support and staff our after-hours location. All of the donations that we got from various churches, from the Lions Club, the Youth Law Enforcement Academy helped pack backpacks and the Transportation Department just being so flexible and wonderful and helping make this such a successful event. Thank you, everyone.
Any questions for any of the ladies?
Did you use all your supplies and did any students go without because you just ran out?
Yeah. We did have a handful of supplies left. We created a spreadsheet and sort of disseminated that to people. It was really not enough to equally distribute, you know, like for the teachers. If somebody needed glue sticks, there might have been 20 left. There were sort of a handful of certain things left. We do have an inventory of that and there were a handful, I would say about 20 of, you know, students that we were just emailing each other. Like at one point, actually, everything was packed in the basement at Ray and we went down in the basement and we were packing backpacks down there to get kids what they need. So there was a handful left. We did the best that we could at the end, but definitely there are kids, I think especially at the secondary level, because we don't necessarily know what they need till the first day of school regarding each class. So we try to do the best we can. We do binders, notebooks and things we know they'll need, but we can't exactly know what they need until school starts. So that's something we definitely want to work on in the future.
Yeah, Meredith just shared, those items are more expensive, the binders, the backpacks, the scientific calculators, those are the things that, you know, we don't see enough of those donations because they're pricey.
One difference this year that I did forget to mention was that our district went towards grade level specific supply lists and that really helped streamline if a fourth grader showed up, we didn't need to waste some of our valuable time because we were only there for 90 minutes to two hours, kind of thumbing through, which one is Van Buren, third grade? Every third grader needed the same supplies. So while, you know, kids didn't go without, say, but if they needed a red, blue and yellow folder, we were able to provide three folders for the most part and that seemed to satisfy most teachers, which was very helpful.
Great job, ladies. Thank you so much. Okay, so next, let's go to acceleration criteria update. We have a couple of teachers there as well, right? We have Tiffany and Joel. Tony, Renee? Yep. Come on up. Oh, Dave, you're going to help? Great. Let's let Dave start off.
There we go. Okay, thank you. So we have an update for the acceleration committee. I have our two ladies, Sarah, Joel Fiorini, who's on the committee, as well as Tiffany Stubman, she's on the committee as well. So if you have additional questions for any of us, we can answer those. Oh, is it a scroll? Sorry, I was clicking. Okay, so our committee is really broken up into two sections. One is for communications, one is for criteria. We've spent a considerable amount of time looking at the rubric information that we're providing for parents in terms of what's the additional information. And I think it's important for everyone to be reminded that the criteria for acceleration is different than the rubric information. So the rubric information is the, and you'll see on the next slide, the information that we try to give parents related to their student, data-wise, so that they can make, take a look, a better look at their student and say, so this is how the student is performing in different areas. So the, the actual criteria itself has not changed, but what we've spent last year doing was looking at every five and 10 weeks, we were looking at the students' progress in accelerated math and updating our rubric as we went through and taking a look at that and seeing how students were performing. The acceleration letter itself, we had a couple tweaks to that. We're trying to improve consistently with the data, what we are communicating to parents. So that was what we worked on this past year. And again, there's the criteria and the rubric information. And you can see, we send to students, to parents, the students' overall grade six average. So in a perfect world, we'd be able to send them the end of the year average, but our letters and decisions have to go out earlier in the school year. So we send them the information that we have, but we also provide the star scores for math in ELA as well as state testing scores if those students took the test. Some of our students opt out, so they don't have test information, so we make adjustments on our rubric for that if that information is missing. The criteria itself is still an 85 overall average in Math VI and that's the information that we send home. And part of the letter also includes very clearly that parents should be contacting, the classroom teacher should be contacting the guidance counselor and/or the principal if they have questions about their particular student and what they would like to know from a teacher perspective, from a counselor perspective, from a principal's perspective, you know, is this the right choice for my child? So moving forward, we, this year, we are going to be tracking the 18-19 math cohort that we looked at all of their data from last year. So we're going to look at them as eighth graders this year. And we will start collecting the data for the students who are currently in math in the 19-20 school year. We also, the committee would, had requested that we pull past data from students so that we could see how our rubric, the additional information on those kids would potentially look, just so we have a larger data set. So we are in the process, Danielle is helping pull that data so that we can present that to committee and take a look at it. So again, we're using all of this to try to help improve what we're communicating to students and families. And so we've got, you know, our work cut out for us, but I think it's been good so far. Any questions?
I have a question on, so previously, and I don't, you didn't touch on it, so I don't know if it's still there. Can any parent opt their, any child in regardless of the 85 I know we had, where you could either opt in or opt out?
Yes.
Regardless of scores?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's always been a parent choice.
Okay.
To challenge in.
So, looking at the rubric, do you guys take into consideration student attendance or student behavior when you're compiling that information?
We looked at that information and our students are, their attendance is pretty phenomenal at Ray and the same with Discipline. It's very little to use that for data to have a student go into accelerated. It wouldn't make or break. Naturally, the students who do have poor attendance, their grades do suffer, but the teachers do work hard with them during ECL or their study halls to get them caught up to learn that content, just because it is that secondary level. So the students that are choosing to go in accelerated are also using their spare time to get caught up when they are absent.
I'm just, behind the scenes as well, the sixth grade teachers have spent some time last year, I'm assuming we'll do it again this year, during our PLC time, we have talked about those factors. So we've looked at individual students. We actually put some of that data right into the spreadsheet for the acceleration committee to look at if there were students with excessive absenteeism and things like that. So we are taking a look at it kind of behind the scenes a little bit, even though it's not on the rubric.
So when you use the rubric, that's solely for families, right? You send it home to the families?
Correct.
And so the criteria is just that? So any student who achieves an 85 has the option to move into acceleration?
Correct.
Correct. So when you say an 85, is that like a, do you guys look at the data, like is it a true 85 or is it a student who maybe, may have taken, I don't know, like three retakes on a test or something to improve their grade or a student who's turned in like an assignment late, I don't know, six times out of the marking period?
I, no, go ahead.
It depends on the philosophy of the teacher, but the Math VI teachers are looking at their students and they can tell, they're looking at the data when we have the rubric. They also are sort of indicating students that they know have the innate ability and then the students that are working hard. So while that information is not necessarily shared to parents, but it might be in a private conversation when the parents are looking at that rubric, saying, please keep in mind your student may need to get a little bit more extra help next year, but are very capable of doing the content, but just know that they may...
Just behind the scenes as well, the sixth grade teachers have spent some time last year, I'm assuming we'll do it again this year, during our PLC time, we have talked about those factors. So we've looked at individual students. We actually put some of that data right into the spreadsheet for the acceleration committee to look at if there were students with excessive absenteeism and things like that. So we are taking a look at it kind of behind the scenes a little bit, even though it's not on the rubric.
So when you use the rubric, that's solely for families, right? You send it home to the families?
Correct.
And so the criteria is just that, so any student who achieves an 85 has the option to move into acceleration?
Correct.
Correct. So when you say an 85, is that like, do you guys look at the data, like, is it a true 85 or is it a student who maybe, may have taken, I don't know, like three retakes on a test or something to improve their grade, or a student who's turned in like an assignment late, I don't know, six times out of the marking period?
I, no, go ahead.
It depends on the philosophy of the teacher, but the Math Six teachers are looking at their students and they can tell, they're looking at the data when we have the rubric. They also are sort of indicating students that they know have the innate ability and then the students that are working hard. So while that information is not necessarily shared to parents, but it might be in a private conversation when the parents are looking at that rubric, saying, please keep in mind, your student may need to get a little bit more extra help next year, but are very capable of doing the content, but just know that they may need to put a little bit more effort in. But it's not necessarily part of the rubric.
What percentage of the students are going into acceleration if the grade, if the average has to be 85 or above? How many students out of, what percentage?
This current cohort in seventh grade, 55%, excuse me, 49% are going in accelerated set right now.
And is that higher or lower than what you've done in past years?
It's lower than last year's cohort, which was 55%.
Just point of clarification, so 85 allows you to, or you're, I don't know what the term is, but you're invited to accelerate, but you could have a 55 and a parent could opt their child in, right? So 85 isn't a hard boundary that if you get less than 85, you can't do it, right? Okay, I just want to make sure terminology-wise I'm understanding. Okay.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I just want to ask a couple of follow-up questions. So right now, 49% have opted in to accelerate.
Yep.
How many were eligible? What percentage of students were eligible to accelerate based on the 85?
They're all eligible?
No, no, I'm sorry. Any, what percentage of students had an average of 85 or better?
I can tell you that 26 students of the 226 did not score an 85.
26 of?
Yep, so 200 students scored 85 or higher.
Out of a total of 226 in the?
Yep.
Can I just make one comment? So the criteria to get to what I think Jeff's alluding to hasn't changed, but the goal and the work of this committee, which is ongoing, is that they're trying to put together and establish this rubric so that we're looking at more than one data point to make a recommendation of whether a student qualifies to accelerate in or not. So the whole work that the committee is doing with this rubric is to eventually, if things work out, you know, they're looking at this data, that rubric will ultimately replace the current criteria if it's not where we feel it needs to be as a committee. And that could be more information, more useful tool for families. Because I think one of the things that has come up over time, the last few years specifically, is that, you know, right now, we're only utilizing one piece of information to make this decision. And it's an important decision. So having all this information is just what we do. It's what's important. We look at data all the time. So we're putting it to, they're putting it into clear language so that it's clear for parents what it is to mean that they've met the criteria using that rubric.
And just to clarify, the other piece that we hoped to clarify through this work was, teachers can speak to parents. There was this misconception, you know, over the years supposedly that, you know, teachers should not talk to parents about acceleration. And we had lengthy discussions at the committee level to say, no, you know the students best, you know, as far as their performance in your classroom. So when you talked about attendance and those kind of things, as Joel said, we did gather that information, but we opted at this point, the teachers opted, they're gonna have that. So now, if Joel decides to call Mrs. Smith about her son, or Mrs. Smith calls Joel and says, gee, you know, I think he should go into it, Joel can refer to attendance if she feels that's an issue or the performance she sees in class on that student. But we've had lengthy discussions to say, you know, don't wait until that time of year to have a discussion with a parent either. If a kid is performing at a 75, hopefully you've talked to the parent already if you've had concerns. But that was a really, I think, a big piece we needed to clear up, that teachers knew, heard you talk to parents.
So, so let's say I have a sixth grader. Fortunately, I don't. But, you know, I have a sixth grader, I'm, you know, my first child, and we get a letter home saying, you know what, your child is eligible to accelerate. What's the, what would you tell them the benefit of it is to accelerate them? So they'll start a, they'll start taking Regents exams for math in eighth grade, correct? So what would you tell them the benefit of that is?
Just being a sixth grade teacher, I actually have this conversation often. I usually tell my parents that it's twofold, right? So looking into the future, they would have that opportunity to take those assessments earlier, maybe take advanced placement classes. We do talk a lot about the different pathways. So we do talk about the fact that there's other ways to accelerate later on. But then I also talk about the desire for a challenge. So like she was talking about that innate ability, or they just love math, you know, I'll talk to my parents about maybe looking for a challenge and, you know, we talk about the paces faster. And we specifically talk that there's some more material in that class. So we try and give them as much information as we can so that they can make the best decision. Because we have parents every year, and like Tony said, I can speak for all of my sixth grade colleagues that I worked with last year, we all spoke with a lot of parents and, you know, tried to give them as much information as we could so that they could have their questions answered. So I kind of go about it, those two, those two thoughts.
And I think something different that happened this year at the, I'm not sure what you call it, the evening where the sixth grade parents come about seventh grade.
Yep.
If you want to talk about how you talked about acceleration now or later?
Yep. So we, in the last two years, we've really done, like, we've made our parent night more focused on accelerating students and talking about the different pathways on what a traditional Math Seven curriculum is versus the accelerated and what the expectations are. In addition to some of the things that Renee was mentioning and Tony about the parents knowing their students best, students, as they go to Dergi, they're now going to be taking music ensembles, sports competitions where their commitments outside of school are taking away their time of studying. So again, those parents that are choosing to accelerate, they need to know that they also have to devote time to that accelerated rigor and pace of mathematics. So again, ultimately leaving the decision up to the parents to know their student best if they can handle that course load and workload with their extra cooker activities. So we have a parent night in the spring before we have our 30-week data where we then send out the rubric to the parents so they can make that informed decision.
That meeting was also spoke to the parents about, you know, so what if my child doesn't accelerate now, can they do it later? We did have that conversation that, you know, it might be for your child better to wait until they're in high school and they take two sciences at once. Or, you know, there's other ways to accelerate than like just now in seventh grade. So we keep refining that presentation and what that looks like. And I know we'll revisit that again this year. But I think there's more transparency about what that means than there has been in the past.
Does somebody make it clear to the parents and students who opt in, who did not get the 85? I don't, maybe they had an 83, maybe they had a 65, I don't know. But does somebody make it clear to them that they are accepting a responsibility that's going to be challenging and that they're going to be expected to maybe put a little more effort in in seventh grade than they did in sixth? That should be, they, do they understand the, not the gravity, but the extent of the difficulty of what they're taking on?
Over the summer, I know that I, when I was scheduling the students going into grade seven, I was analyzing that data of the students that were lower than 85. And I made phone calls to my parents just to say, I just want to make sure accelerated math is what you're considering. And again, just reiterating the fact that it's a faster pace and rigor. And of the four parents I called, they all chose to stay in it.
So, my sixth grade student is now, you know, in 10th grade. Do we have, and I'm just curious, I'm throwing out a crazy question, but do we have the ability to offer our students that once, so now they're done, you know, 11th grade, what's the next thing? If they, if we want to continue to push them in terms of, you know, math, what's the next thing for them? If they've now kind of hit that, do we have AP courses? What are we offering to them in junior, senior year that they wouldn't have gotten if they didn't accelerate?
The course catalog at Baker is phenomenal. And I use it as a reference tool to my students all the time at Ray for when they want to make that decision to accelerate, to see the opportunities that they can take in project lead the way in engineering and STEM courses and the higher level mathematics courses through Syracuse or OCC or AP work. So while the sixth grade students, it seems so far away, I'd just like to show them something tangible that they could see. So those are the opportunities, if they're finding success in acceleration, to take advantage of.
I just want to add that I think it's not just students who are, who math is their thing and they're really great at math. They might be able to accelerate in math, but then it gets math out of the way. So when they get to the high school, they can take other things that they might really be more interested in. So it just, you know, it's not just for the kids that are like totally gung ho math. I think you all are providing a lot more information than I ever got, you know, when I was a sixth grade parent. So I applaud you and I think this is phenomenal. And I'm hoping by tracking some of the data, you'll be able to tell us what's happening with these various cohorts. And I'd be really interested in knowing about those 20 students that opted in. How did they do? You know, what happened with them? And I don't know if you have this information, but then maybe the next time you come, it'd be really interesting to know how many special ed kids are being accelerated. You know, I think one of the things we don't want to do, and you know, how many kids from diverse backgrounds are being accelerated? Because I think one of the things we don't want to do is have a two-tiered system here in Baldwinsville. You know, we want to be able to have equal opportunity for all. And that may mean, you know, being creative about the way we deliver the education, you know, so that some of these students from diverse backgrounds can be as successful.
And actually, for some of the special education students, those are conversations that we are having during their annual reviews, just because if the students were recommended for an integrated co-talk class and they're choosing to accelerate, then that's obviously a change in their program mods. So that, those are conversations that are becoming more frequent over the last few years.
Kim asked what the goal of the program was. And I've heard the committee present twice now, the last time being back in December 2017. And one of the questions that I had after the last presentation was, I never heard how success is defined for the students. So how do you, what do you consider successful for the students, knowing at least in math that they're having to build all the way through the program, which, I mean, we've asked for data to see and be able to track each cohort to kind of give us a bigger picture. But how do you define success? I'm hearing everyone having an opportunity, which is great, but you guys are the educational experts. Where's, how is that defined in the program?
I mean, I think right now, we're in the process of, again, following those cohorts and pulling their grades and looking at basically an 85. If an 85 is what we're looking at for kids to get in, we're looking over time, what does that grade look like? So can we tell you what that is right now? No. But we're hoping, and Danielle has put together a great template for us to start using going forward as we track kids or go back and track kids if we had applied the rubric to them. And that's data we hope to bring to you in the future, not far in the future, but in the future. But.
I would add that I think the success is probably defined too at the family level for the student, not necessarily at the school level. I think there's an element of a family who, and kids who want to be challenged. And, you know, if they don't get 95, 96, 97 in an accelerated class, but they get an 80, that might be a success for that particular family or that particular child. So I do think there's an element of that as well that we don't necessarily get to define.
Right, I know. I guess I get concerned when I look at, you know, the Regents exams, just using that as one of the markers, you know, when you say an 80, you know, just knowing how massively curved those exams are, especially in algebra because everyone needs to pass it. I guess that's my concern going forward and why I'm very interested in seeing the cohorts separated and seeing how they're doing in those successive classes. You know, I hear about the criteria to get in, but where are we, parents don't know, I mean, where's that mark where we're going to say, this probably isn't the best decision for the child? Like, you have criteria to get in, do you have criteria to stay in, I guess is what the question is. Like, if you need it to get in, I would assume that you'd need it to stay in. Has that been discussed amongst the committee at all?
The Dergi teachers and the Dergi counselors, they look at the five-week and 10-week data when they're in Algebra I. And there, these are the conversations that they're having with the students and the family after the first five weeks. And I believe the drop period for the students is 10 weeks at Dergi for them. If they want to go from Algebra I to pre-algebra, they can make that change. But they are having these conversations, this is what we're hearing at our acceleration committee, that the Algebra I teachers are very much so having conversations with the students who are struggling in that class.
So I understand the parent component. I guess I struggle with us because us having the board goals and stuff, you know, we had a, it seems like our, it contradicts our board goals where we want to have 50% mastery rate, but we can let them go as low as they want. I guess they just, they two don't mesh right now. So I'm really struggling with that. And also the curve and how is that impacting our students, you know, I'd really like to see a connection made between the math and science because they need those algebra skills to be successful in chemistry and physics. You know, what are enrollments in the science classes and has a connection been made with the data right now?
Right. So again, we're going to be pulling bigger sets of data. This is just something we've just started as Danielle's come on. But I will say, Tony's thoughts are, you know, I don't know if it's a magic number, to be honest with you. I don't know if because a kid got a 70 versus a kid who got a 90. I don't, I don't know that answer. I think we have to look at long-term, how are they performing in other classes? But acceleration or not, you know, how does a teacher respond to a student who's performing at a 70? I think those are the questions. And that's the discussions we've had at the acceleration committee too, is to say, put acceleration aside, how do you talk to students about their performance and to families about a student's performance? Because it should be no different to other than acceleration. So those are discussions that haven't happened before and we're just in the midst of having.
Right. I mean, acceleration, I mean, you're speeding through everything. You're going through everything faster. I think every kid who wants to try it can. I'm just looking at the succession and looking at the results on some of our Regents exams and the aspirational data. They say aspirational is getting, is college and career ready in 80%. And I'm looking at even just looking at the numbers of our accelerated students taking that exam and they're not meeting that, that benchmark, which is considered college and career ready. So I look at it as, you know, are we taking something away from these students in the sense that they've lost a year of cognitive development, more maturity, and maybe slowed down? So that's why I'm asking, are we really looking at everything? I understand the 85, that's what it is right now. And the rubric is not a set, that's going to be a work in progress. I'm happy to see that you're pulling the data from the current ninth and 10th graders. I'm just a little surprised, I guess, because we've been going through this layout for a few years now. And you really know how those kids, you can look at their Regents exams now and see what they had done before and probably use that component with a little more strength right now. I'm just surprised it just wasn't really looked at. Maybe, I'm not sure how you're looking at it. I'm not on the committee. I know how I look at it, but I don't know the detail that you have available to look at.
So just to chime in, they have been looking at that information. And I, and I think why we're taking this slow is we're not just going to try to fix something without having systems and structures in place where we can answer all those questions. I mean, they're struggling as it is with the rubric, trying to identify and looking at those groups of students, you know, 12 out of 16, is that enough? Is that success? Is that what is going to indicate that a student's going to be successful in those later courses? And so thankfully, time is what we have, being able to utilize the data that we have. And with Danielle and her new role, she's going to be able to get them the information sooner. But this committee is really the ones driving these conversations. And so, you know, unfortunately, they're not there yet. They're not there with those answers, but they're working toward that. And, you know, we don't want to put something out there that is not going to be there for a long period of time, because then we're just going to be reinventing the weird. We're not going to change just to change. They're really driving some pretty unique outcomes when. They're really driving, um, some pretty unique outcomes when, when we, you know, think about this with the end product.
So I guess.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's, what's changed at all. I was just listening, you know, to the presentation back in December of 2017, just to refresh my memory, some of the things. And actually you guys touched upon a lot of the things, the points that the teachers on that committee brought up. I just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. I passed.
So I'll fill in while you.
Thank you.
Catch up here. So my experience with this so far has been positive. As a father of a seventh and ninth grader, over the last couple of years, we've had to, you know, go through this process. And, um, you know, both kids in sixth grade scored well in the math. And I believe both qualified for the criteria given. But they're significantly different children. I think this is where the parents got to get involved, because my older one was very, very challenged in sixth grade to get that grade. And I wish I had her work ethic, because she will put all the time necessary to get there, but it takes a little longer. Versus my younger child has his homework done before he gets on the bus, because he doesn't have to think about it and it's done. For my daughter, the choice of, even though she qualified, we all agreed, including her and meeting with the counselors and the teachers, that, you know, that the acceleration path was not the path for her. And she continues to do well, because she has that time to put the effort in. My son, on the other hand, needs to be challenged. He comes home, says he's bored because it's not fast. So I, you know, even though they technically met the criteria, there's still that whole parent component. And I, you know, met with, you know, counselors and teachers. And I think you really have to understand each kid. It's really hard to quantify that of the difference between them, except for you got to know them. And I think it's really worked well for us. Now, you know, everyone's unique and I get that. But I just wanted to share that so far what's been in place has worked really well, because we've all been engaged, including the, the staff at, at Ray's. So, um, thank you.
Yeah, we've got, we went through that conversation too. And I, I would have to agree, cause there's a lot of factors. I even look at my own kids and they are very different. I remember they talked about on and off ramps back in December 2017 and that there was a need for those. So I understood the layout as it was presented after Bozies went through and helped us with the layout after the previous administration. But that came back in that committee of there needs to be some more on and off ramps for our students. Have, has the committee discussed what those are and where they are to help our kids either way? Have there been any additions since December 2017 when that was first presented to us?
I don't think that cohort has made its way through yet in terms of having that opportunity for the on and off ramp. Cause the students that we first mailed home the rubric to, which wasn't as detailed as the one that we did last school year, they're just going into ninth grade. So I think that that's where we started having a discussion of the opportunity to double up. And I think that they could take advantage of that once they get to Baker. But just because of the nature of the split buildings.
No, on off ramps, like is it going to be easy if someone gets into the class and realizes that they're in over their head? Get out and, and vice versa. Because that was brought up when I listened to the audio this weekend, just kind of refreshing my memory of where we were then and where we are now. And that seemed, that was one of the statements, I was maybe we need a couple more on off ramps, especially at Durgie. And I'm wondering if there's any change to the layout that was in existence then as compared to now.
So we're continuing with the, with the same on and off ramps that we've always had. Kids at Durgie, they, as you were saying, they look at those kids very closely within the first five and 10 weeks. So if there are issues, that they're able to move those kids if there is that conversation with the parent and the student. So in addition to that, no, we have not added any additional off ramps or on ramps at this point.
Can you tell me the number? Going into this school year, 51% are not going to be an accelerator, right? For the sixth going into seventh. How many students did qualify with 85 or above, but declined to go accelerated? Do you have a number on that?
I don't have it for that year. I have it for the cohort that's now at Durgie. And let's see. I have at one point, students with an average who chose to enroll in, well, I have students in math seven who chose to enroll in pre-algebra, accelerated seven, who chose to enroll in pre-algebra at Durgie. It was 20.
I'm, I'm saying six to seven, sixth grade going into seventh. How many had an 85 and said, thanks, but no thanks, we won't do the accelerated?
I don't have that, but I don't think it's very many.
A dozen?
From what I recall, looking at this over time, I would say it's definitely not more than that.
Yeah.
It's when they say handful, it's a handful. Most students, if they meet the criteria, at least when I last looked at it, were choosing the accelerated path.
If I, if I recall correctly, there were different formats for the seventh grade model over the past few years. Is that correct? At one, at one year they had the core, the paired courses. One year was the one course that was kind of, you know, just to go through the material quicker.
The last two have been consistent. The prior year there was, it might've even been two years ago. I don't, however.
So that, I mean, that's, that's a, that's an additional factor that maybe.
There has been changing parameters all the way throughout, throughout, you know, even the, the experience of the students that are currently in 10th and 11th grade. I mean, there's, I mean, that's what makes this whole issue complex. And why they're taking their time as teachers to really look at through this as a committee is that, you know, we could, we could indicate, yes, there were, we know that there were issues where our current 11th grade students going back to, um, you know, the chemistry exam. But we've also had changing in staff. And that, you know, throws another wrinkle in, um, you know, the circumstances. So there are a lot of different parameters and they're trying to do a due diligent job at making sure that, you know, when they're coming up with whatever it is that they're coming up with, that it meets the needs of where we're at. And we're not just reacting, um, they're really being thoughtful about these. And they're taking a lot of time to have those conversations.
Well, I was just about to say that, um, I, every day when I sit up here, every time I sit up here, I, I look out and I look at the people around this room and I'm in awe of what you do. Um, and I think that you guys do an incredible job and a very difficult job in trying to manage all of these things. And the way, um, I think the thoughtfulness in which you are going about this and thinking about all of these things. And also, you know, thinking about kind of where our students are. And when, you know, when we have a kid who needs to be challenged, like Jeff's son, versus a kid who might not be ready to be challenged in some of those ways. So I do want to say thank you, because I think a lot of times this is a thankless job. I do have one question though, related to the region's data. And, and you guys don't have to answer this today, you can come back and answer it. But I was looking at the Algebra I scores, um, the region's exams. And if you look at, um, overall, we had a 21% mastery rate. But if you break it out, um, the mastery rate for eighth graders was 40%. And the mastery rate for ninth graders was 3%. What happened? Do we like, I mean, and you had the same, you had 217 kids from eighth grade, you had 207 kids in ninth grade. How could there be that much of a discrepancy between two classes, two, you know, grade levels?
I mean, I can respond. I believe this is, you know, my initial reaction and assumption. Think about the current eighth grade students, our students that are typically performing at higher levels, they are accelerated. The students that are in ninth grade were not accelerated. They might struggle, they're on track, on track's a good thing. But they're not, because the, the ninth graders that are in algebra, their counterpart, which was accelerated, they're in geometry. So they're not included in that, in that subset.
So you're saying if they're, if they're not eligible to be in accelerated, if, if they're a lower level student that's doing this on track, we're okay with a 3% mastery rate?
I'm not saying that I'm okay with that. What I'm saying is that's the, that's the difference that you're seeing. If we were to back in the current ninth grade students, their algebra scores, you would see probably some consistency with the mastery rate for that cohort of students. That's the information that that group's looking at. Um, there's lots of factors. I think that they would be more in line with what you would see with an English 11 student, because the whole cohort takes that exam at the same time, as far as the mastery rate. Um, the same thing with their global studies and social studies. We've, we've taken a population of students out of that data set for that one year. So looking at it from a cohort perspective, they're pulling that information. They're pulling it for students with disabilities, um, all of the, the subgroups, so we can get a better understanding. Cause are we, you know, segregating students for one reason or another, because of the track that they happen to be in? Those are all the conversations that they're having. We don't have all the answers. But I would agree with you that it's not acceptable. You know, the experience that a student gets for taking algebra in ninth grade should be the same, if not better experience than a student that took it in eighth grade as an accelerated student. The instruction's the same. It's a, it's a heterogeneous group of students. So when they take it in eighth grade as an accelerated, they're taking the course with ninth grade students. It's not like we're creating two separate, um, courses. But they're the experts and they're looking at that information.
I, I have to go back for a second. The, the current juniors, that's the cohort that missed a lot of stuff. But our, our sophomores and our freshmen have been doing the same layout that Bozies helped us with when we restructured it after the previous administration. So we do have data, which is up there, that you guys are going to be looking at to see how those students are doing. But I do have an issue. I don't understand your comment where you said there's been a change of teachers and how that could put, that could negatively impact our students. Cause the layout's the layout and shouldn't they be following that layout? I'm not really under, I just want to understand what you meant, cause you may have misspoke and I just.
No, no.
Cause I'm not sure how that factored into the results.
What I'm saying without names, and I know Matt alluded to this at the last board meeting with the region's data, there are a lot of parameters which ultimately impact how successful students are on exams. So the curriculum issue, that's one piece of information. We have had changes in classroom teachers, teaching courses. Some people were teaching, uh, courses for the first time. That could be considered another parameter that ultimately impacts the success of a student. I'm not making any assumptions. I'm just giving you examples of things that could play into a student's performance. Attendance, we could say, you know, if they're not in school. I mean, there's lots of different scenarios. They're trying to be cautious about making generalized statements without having the data to back it up.
You guys are great, really. I know these are difficult conversations and you're like, holy cow, but you guys really have done a good job.
So where, where are we going now? Like, are we going to get another report back? Cause obviously you still have work to do on the rubrics. So obvious, I know at least I would, I mean, I'm, the rest of the board can decide as well. If we're going to get another, you know, presentation, especially when you pull the data from the current ninth and 10th graders, because that's, I think, going to show a lot. I mean, when I look at what's happened with the layout and knowing the math and science layout really well, we do have a lot of bumps, we have a lot of valleys. And I think a lot of those can be explained based on what happened to each cohort and what cohort had what material. And I will say, we had a big boost in living environment. For example, those students happened to get that material for two years in a row, which would explain that. We, we have our slumps, like in chemistry this year, that cohort of students didn't get the physical science. So as a committee, I think, I, I know if I was on the committee, I would be discussing with my colleagues of, you know, speeding through this or skipping stuff. Is that really giving us the best results? Or as a philosophy, as you're doing with the whole, uh, rubric, to be going at slow and steady, getting it right. Maybe slow and steady in the classroom isn't such a bad idea either, because when the kids got it twice or it was slowed down, we actually got better results for them as they took those successive classes. Just a point to consider in your discussions.
Okay, so, uh, I'm sorry. I just, I just want to wrap it up, because I purposely kept quiet, because my charge was when, you know, whatever it was years ago. We were in a little bit of a situation there. And, um, I'm not, you know, I think I spoke to them, I gave them what my expectations were. What my expectations were, because nobody else, board included, had no clue. Cause we were confused, right? We, I mean, I think everybody had different things going on in there. Change is hard for anybody, right? So you went to classroom, you know, like the teachers, you know, they got to go in and they're used to doing, you know, a sad thing, because, and they've been told to do it that way for years. So now it's like, okay, I didn't want to do that. I, I'm not that person, because that doesn't help. Remember what I just said to that whole class of new teachers? I don't want people, cause that's when they're not going to be the best they can be. So I simply said to them, you know, me, slow and steady, because I said, um, you guys at a practice, they know. I don't even want to pretend to know. We pay them to do that and I didn't want to interfere with it. So that was really what I said to them. And I said, and don't worry, whatever it is, there's no right, wrong. Whatever it is, um, it is. The kids will, will learn from the kids, the, the outcome. And that's going to take time. Now we have Danielle, we have to show that data. But I'll say one other thing, and I, and I hate to put, this is, because this is Matt McDonald and I don't like to put that in there. But it's a different environment now, you know? We have 5,500 kids, 5,600 kids. Every single one of them are different. Like you said, you're two, every single one of those kids are different, everyone. My Caitlin went into honors right away, sixth grade or whatever, immediately. Biggest mistake of her life, my life, biggest mistake. Kira is now taking four, uh, she didn't, she wasn't ready. So, you know, now she's killing it. She's taking four, every kid is different. So we can't, Matt McDonald can't stand up here and say, you're going to do this, you're going to do this. That's not for me to do. I think, I turn to these guys and say, you know what, sit with the parents. Now, the, the three, unacceptable. And that's for us as administrators to address that. All right, what happened? Study that and, and deal with those things. That's not okay. But, um, as far as, you know, the counselors and the teachers, that, you know, they have teams over there to sit with the parents and say, look, you know, this is what I see, you know, my class, you know, math class, you know, there's a, there's a girl in the class. Maybe I like that, you know, homework's all over the place. I, he's interested in that girl. She's not in social studies class. I'm just giving a scenario, but this is real life, you know? Kids are coming to us very different than when we were all kids, right? They, they're coming with, um, they don't even have a coat to wear. There, there are far more bigger issues in their lives than honors. Okay? So, you know, we have to put all those things into perspective and treat each kid as an individual and, um, and love them for who they are, whether they're the smartest person in the world or, or they're, they're, um, in a wheelchair for the rest of their life. They're still human beings. And that's the way I come at it. And this is what I say to the teachers all the time, just make the decision, you guys know, we want to challenge our kids and put the best. But I'm never going to discriminate against any child, whether they're color, sex, anything, whether they should be in a course, not, you know, uh, learning disability, whatever it is. Everybody has a right to do that. And I'm not making that decision. Who am I to make that decision? I am not an expert in that area. I'm one voice and that's why I said to these guys, take a team approach, you know? And believe me, uh, you know, there's, I've had conversations with families in my office, you know, trying to discourage, look, I don't know if it's the best idea, but I, I, the information I provided for them is from these guys. They're the professionals, you know? So I, I kind of, you know, I'm very passionate about it, but I don't want to put Matt McDonald's mix into it, because it's really not about me. I know I'm the superintendent, I try and guide it, but just so the board knows, that's how I guided it. You know, just treat the kid, you know, each kid is their own individual, um, you know, give them choice. And then we'll deal with, as far as administration, those three, that 3%, that's for us. We, that needs to be addressed. And, and Joe has a point. I'm not saying Joe has a very valid point. I, I knew that was what he's going to say. But, um, but I also know that there's other things. He knows it too, but we can't, we're not going to announce that. So I just wanted to say that, just because, um, you know, I just want to make sure, you know, each kid, um, you know, we don't ever discriminate. We just give them the best opportunity, because it is a different world that these kids are coming to. The presentation before, our, our free and reduced lunch went from, uh, from, when I'm. The presentation before, our, our free and reduced lunch went from, from, when I moved here thirteen years ago, it was, oh, boy, thirteen, twelve, thirteen percent, something like that? Yeah, and now, what is it, twenty-seven? I mean, it's different. And everybody says, oh, the demographics are changing. No, it's, it's, it's the finances. Nothing's changed. It's all, those percentages are all the same. It's the, it's the income. That's, you know, for, I'll give it a terms. It's the income and it's families that are just at hard times. But they're still our families and, you know, we have to give them an equal opportunity just like any other child. So, and again, I might be wrong. They could sit and say, well, Matt, you know, we sat together as a team and we really feel this way. Then I'm going to say, you know what, let's do it, you know? I'm, you gotta, gotta take chances, you know? And I'm, you know, I hate to say that because you're taking chances with kids' lives, you know, and their academics. But I don't think we, I do, I say that, but I don't think we are because I, I trust all these guys. You know, I, I trust that they are putting our kids in the, because I've seen them at work. They love those kids. So, it, it's a really, it's really hard, you know? So, that's why I kind of like, I stay quiet because I don't want to put my two cents to it. I want them to go do the work, they're doing awesome, and then learn from that. But that data, the data we just talked about, that Danielle's going to pull, that is what's going to help us make decisions. Really is. That's why we came up with this position. When Danielle starts to come up with those positions from the work that these guys are doing, now they come back to us and now we can see, oh, man, we got to, they're going to tell us, look, yeah, we made a mistake. We got to back off because the data shows this, you know? So, that's really what's going to drive it. It really is. The kids are going to, their performance will help us make the decision on what's best.
I, I think, you know, for me, just listening to everything, I guess it's just a matter of how you define success, whether you want the families to define success or us as a district is going to define success. And we are always inundated with the college and career-ready standards, getting them ready for college. If that's what we're trying to do and that's what we're told that the aspirational data means. So, yeah, when I look at it and I see a number of kids that were allowing or pushing through and not meeting that, I'm like, are we really preparing them if we're already starting them in their first high school math course in a deficit? You know, so I, I look at that. Is, is that the magic marker? Honestly, with the state, I don't know because look how massive that exam has curved. I mean, to pass with a sixty-five, you really only know thirty-one percent of the material. So, when you factor that in, now what are we doing? You know, so I think about that. But with the communications piece, I will have to say, I've sat through two of those presentations now with my own child and I do absolutely appreciate the change and shift from the very first one I went to and showing them that they can accelerate at the high school level. Because a lot of times, sometimes these kids just need another year or two and all of a sudden, they just blossom. And I like that you tell the parents if they're not ready yet. Because I heard of my own child, my friends are doing it. You know, and that's, I fear that's the wrong reason to get into it. But knowing and explaining them that they have that option in high school to get to the same endpoint, just doing it at the other end when they're ready, I very much appreciate it.
I'm glad you said that because that's one big difference that didn't happen in the past. You know, Tiffany is fairly new to us. You know, Tiffany does an amazing job and those conversations didn't happen. So, parents will make the decisions and the majority of parents, they don't know, you know? Even, even me, you know, I would go to the meetings for, for my daughters and I'm like, wait, what? You know, I'm Googling things and it's very, because you're overwhelmed, you know? You're, you're being a dad or a mom and, and, you know, so emotions automatically get involved. And, but that's the difference. We have to educate. And I will tell you from my experience, when you do that and you sit and you explain and show the pathways and different options and because you don't make that decision in sixth grade, maybe every, every kid matures at a different time. Maybe in eighth grade, maybe in twelfth grade, like Kira. Maybe that's, but when you do that, that is very helpful to parents, educating the parents. And that wasn't happening. It does happen now though. So, but that was a great point, yeah.
And we also always talk about like the mental wellness of the kids, you know? If, is, are they truly making the decision? Are they putting themselves into a position of, you know, anxiety? I'm not sure why we're seeing an increase in those numbers with, you know, Liberty Resources and what issues there are. Are they academically related? You know, when I, I, I listen to the, the kids that I know, you know? And when I have a junior telling me that they took, you know, an AP class and two honors classes and they're going to bed after midnight and they swear it's not social media because I pointed that out and called them out, I'm like, no, it's not. And they say to me, well, I signed up for three AP classes this year, I don't know how I'm going to do it. Is that child, you know, I just want to make sure. And again, it's the parents to decide, but I hope that the parents have like that checklist to go through the stuff with them.
Agree with you more because Kira's doing four and I was totally against it, but I have no say in anything. But that, good for her and I'm trying to teach her. You know, once I got to ninth grade, I kind of backed off. They asked me things and I said, you know, that's a great question. Make it a point with your guidance counselor. You know, I know that, but I got to teach, but they got to learn to do that. They got to learn to advocate for themselves, you know? And, but you're right, she's working, she's up till three in the morning. I'm like, I don't, this, you know, what are we in, eight days of school? I don't know how long that's going to last. But you know what? Because she's such a motivator, she will get through. I know she will. But again, that's just an example. Every kid's different. Dave Kilcorse would have dropped in the first hour. Yeah, you guys will stay up and transition right into summer curriculum.
Joe, if you think I can see that, okay? Please, I would be here all day. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to talk about the summer professional learning opportunities our staff had this summer. So, I'm going to start with K six. You'll see a lot of things listed. The learning coaches, myself, staff helped present this summer, specifically Colleen Demms from Reynolds, Patrice Murphy from Palmer, were some of the other presenters. Amy Morgan from Van Buren. So, it really was a combined effort, not just learning coaches and myself, focusing on foundational parts of reading, you know, looking at phonological awareness and those early components of reading, along with still looking at a workshop model and also bringing that into math and looking at it with math and helping teachers understand how that model, you know, they understand what a workshop looks like in ELA. There are still some differences with that in math, but how to do that in, in science at the elementary. So, we use the Smithsonian units. I hate calling them kits, but they look like a kit. Took this summer, Eric Ziegler, another learning coach, offered really what does science instruction look like at elementary? So, to have teachers take some time to look beyond just the, the units that show up in their classrooms and, and to dig a little bit deeper. We have more work to do that at elementary, but that was the start. And our teachers, we're still going to BOSI's for their Smithsonian training. We did send some teachers off, it's not on here, off to fingerlet BOSI's for what's called letters training. And that's really, again, looking at how language works and we'll report more about that in the future. But that's a snippet of what workshops look like at K six, professional learning. Mental health wellness at the K six level. We continued with Anne Marie Canosa and Andy Ail, who are PE teachers who've been working on the wellness activities for students at the elementary level. They, they added more to that. In addition, the social workers got together at K twelve to look at their programs and collaborate on their programs, specifically at K five, looking at, we've purchased the second step curriculum through Racco and Kerry's office. And so, they, the second step is a social emotional curriculum for the social workers. They spent better part of this past year, but also over the summer, looking at the units, mapping out at each grade level. Social workers now at K through five are going to be pushing into classrooms two to three times a year to really cover the mandates from the state on social emotional learning. We also did work throughout the year on the health curriculum at K five. We really have never looked at the health curriculum at the elementary level. So, that, we used our PE teachers for that. There were also classroom teachers part of this. And then luckily, the positivity project correlates directly to the state's mental health standards. So, that was some of the work done this summer and a little bit before the summer.
So, for seven twelve, we did two books in action this summer. One was Not Light But Fire was one that I ran for our teachers. And we did ambitious science teaching. So, this is a great opportunity for staff to come together around a professional resource, a text that we can all read and have conversations about. So, the Not Light But Fire worked into our diversity initiative that English teachers were really clamoring to have conversations about how to talk about race in the classroom because it's such a prevalent issue in the literature that they teach. Social justice is a theme that they are pursuing in their literature choices with children. So, this was a book that fit into that conversation and we invited our social studies teachers as well. So, we'll expand that. It went over very well and teachers were very excited to have that resource. It was a fantastic read. If you're interested in something like that, I would suggest, you know, by all means, take a look at that. It's definitely a practitioner book, but our teachers absolutely loved it. And we're going to continue that with follow-ups for both of these. And our ambitious science teaching is directly related to the equity for all in science education. So, our teachers, we had at least fifteen of our science teachers join that group and they will be also doing follow-up throughout the year. So, the rest of our sessions were one-day workshops around civic, teaching civic online reasoning, which was opened up to all staff. We did writing and social studies to help prepare our students for the Enduring Issues essay. And the Student Engagement Strategies was opened up to all staff. That's a very popular session that we run. And Chromebooks in the math room, in the bathroom or in the classroom, you could have that. NCTM Highlights was also another math, we had teachers go to the National Math Conference. So, they came back and ran a session about the learning that they had from that conference. And then the next two were for science. Obviously, we have three-dimensional teaching and learning that we're asking our teachers to engage in with students. And so, now we are also looking at how do we make our assessments three-dimensional? So, that's based on the work that we've done through OC and BOSI's. And Claims Evidence Reasoning is also something that we're asking our science teachers to engage in and making those connections to what students are already doing in terms of English and social studies. And we had the very popular Teaching with Tech, which is using the Chrome extensions and apps, which is open to all of our staff. So, we both received quite a bit of feedback from teachers that they were really pleased with the offerings that we had this summer. And we had waiting lists on a lot of our sessions this year.
One of the other things, just before I go on, was that we did a little bit differently is follow-up sessions were already scheduled for during the school year. So, a lot of the workshops that took place in the summer, teachers had already have enrolled. For after-school follow-ups, you had to attend the summer one. If you did, then there was like, could be a series of two follow-up sessions during the year. So, to continue that support, teachers have also reached out to learning coaches if they attended those sessions to say, hey, I want you in my classroom to help me implement some of this. So, that was really good to see, saw an increase in that. K seven, we pulled our RTI teams, so spent a day with our reading specialists. And now that we have math specialists, thank you, at the elementary, we did that too. Reading, specifically looking on building an assessment folder, an assessment protocol, just really shoring up that, you know, whatever's going on at one school is going on at all schools. Looking at, it's called Words Their Way, which is really how language works. It's a resource for teachers to, to use with students. So, the reading teachers learned how to use these assessments and how they can inform their instruction and also support the classroom. With math, it was really starting, this was our first summer with having all five buildings now, having math specialists. So, really just building that team, talking about what are the assessments available. We currently use a program called Do the Math that we started many, many years ago. We're going to be revisiting that, updating that program, getting training for everyone on that. But it was an exciting time to work with both of those teams. And again, they've all really reached out already to coaches and myself to continue their work during the school year. And then with special education, with Racco and Kerry's office, they were able to send, let's see, six administrators and twelve teachers to the SGU Summer Inclusive Institute. And we've done that, Racco's been able to do that in conjunction with Joe for quite a few years. But this was probably the first time in a while where we had teams of the administrator and the teachers going, coming back and implementing much of what they learned into their, into their own buildings and classrooms. Also, we have two teachers that Racco sent off for specialized training, Rena James and Mindy Howard. They're a co-teaching team at the elementary level. So, they could turn key training on, if you're a new co-teaching team. So, staff has asked over time, you know, if I'm going to be a co-teaching team and I haven't done it before or maybe Renee's my special ed teacher and we've never worked together before. There's a whole process of how you build that relationship. So, they've offered a one-day workshop on that. And also workshops for people who've been in co-teaching, you know, and what, how to take it to the next level. In addition, IEP planning time. So, every, every co-teaching team, K through twelve, was given a day to work with their team, including the teaching assistants, speech pathologists, OTPT, to co-plan and look at their caseloads together before the school year starts.
So, it wasn't specific to special education teachers at the secondary level. It was a general led initiative, or workshop, I should say, that we, we had a request from one of our special area teachers who said, I only have these kids for ten weeks and I really need to know how to understand them very quickly. And so, we put together a session, two of our special ed teachers came and put together a session about just how to read an IEP and how to make the most out of it within a short period of time. And that was the one, I, I could have, probably could have run that session three times. It was that popular. Just the intent was to have teachers come away with some instructional strategies, but we spent so much time, it was a half day. We thought, well, this will be simple, right? People read IEPs all day long. Well, they don't. And so, they, we spent a lot of time looking at and examining and answering a lot of questions about a student's IEP. So, the follow-up to that will be, let's bring in some actual students who we have in our classrooms and then talk about how do we differentiate for these students in an upcoming lesson or a unit? So, we are planning that follow-up and we'll continue to offer that as the popularity of it suggested we needed it.
Professional learning for teaching assistants, we offered it during different parts of the summer. They're a tough group to get in the summer because many of them are working in summer school. So, we offered it during summer school and then towards the end of August. As you look through those sessions, you'll see a lot of it is really on the relationships they have with students and how they deal with difficult students. You know, we did talk about some of the foundational pieces of learning too, but a lot of it was, you know, they, they're such a key piece of special education students, because that's those teaching assistants, and how they form those relationships and deal sometimes with challenging behaviors. So, they, that was really well-attended, those workshops from the teaching assistants, knowing that we need to continue to offer more for them as time goes on. And then that leads us into the curriculum work that we did. So, at K six, we did work on all four of those areas. With ELA, Spotlight Grade Six, we really worked, we took those teachers and worked on, you know, knowing that their literacy block looks different. How do you approach that middle school student and how do you design a workshop model in a double block of ELA? They've also, this year, will be having, purchased a book- block of ELA? They've also, this year, we'll be having, purchased a bookroom of over twelve hundred titles, six copies each, that are, is a leveled bookroom. So teaching them, how do you, how do you use that? What does that look like in a middle school classroom? We're also, Edoctrina, the platform we've been using for elementary, basically for RTI and keeping our goals on there, we're now shifting into using the curriculum piece, so getting the curriculum documents up on there. And then we did the, you know, continued work in math and science. And our fine arts people, too, brought in the art and general music teachers to continue work on their curriculum.
So secondary, we continue to have, all of our areas are under construction. So ELA and math, if you look at the Next Gen timeline, we are in Phase Two, which is continuing to build capacity towards the new assessments. So in ELA, we spent a considerable amount of time last year revamping our research narrative and text analysis, vertical alignment of our skills, based on the adjustments to the Next Gen ELA. This year, we will, excuse me, I should say, argument. This year, we will be looking, working on the narrative. That's going to be the biggest one to tackle. So we're going to work on that this year. ELA teachers were very, felt like they were in a really good place after the work this year. And so it was great to hear some of the really positive things that they had to say about some of the changes that we made. For math, we had our Ray and Dirgy and geometry people from Baker come down and they did some vertical alignment based on the movement of some of the content. And social studies, we continue to work towards our students taking that test for Global in June of this year. And US History is on track to take the new framework exam in 2021. Science, well, science is science. They've got a lot going on, as you well know. World Languages, they are actually undergoing, we have two of our world language staff who are on the State Review Committee for the standards. So we should be seeing some changes by next year. And we'll just see how aggressive the state gets in those changes. And we're also looking at an emphasis on a comprehensive input for our students, which is attempting to increase the amount of time that they are speaking the language versus maybe doing worksheet-type activities. For CTE, that includes our tech, facts, and business departments. We now have our CTE ten-week courses. I will be meeting with our CTE committee in the next few weeks so that we can take an assessment of what our current programming, programming looks like in CTE. And let's, we're going to reexamine our pathways. We do have a team of teachers for, from our tech department who are working on the tech-approved pathway through the state. So there has, the crosswalk documents that have to be done for that is pretty time-consuming. So we'll give an, an update to the committee on where we are with that. And continue to work with the middle-level theme and content modules that the state is providing for us for grades six, seven, and eight. And PE is not on here, but PE will be undergoing a curriculum update with their standards over the next year. We're just waiting to hear something from the state on that.
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments. This is a very difficult time for you guys because of all the changes that are going on in every single content area. Your job is definitely not easy right now. And it's, you know, everyone always talks about, you know, adding this and adding that for fun, but you guys are barely staying above water, keeping up with what absolutely has to get done by the state. And I have to say, thank you. And to throw into that, the whole science component, the bravery that the teachers have in redoing and shifting to a completely different model, being the conceptual model, on top of new standards and a three-dimensional, whole new way of thinking. I have to say that I'm very impressed by the staff in this district and the amount of professional development they do. I mean, I love seeing the list that Joe, your office sends out, showing us what's available to the summer and how quickly these things fill up. And we already got the email, how many days into school that everything is, you know, set and used up for out-of-district professional development for this semester already. It's, kudos to all the teachers that want to keep improving. Out of everything that you said today, though, the thing that really stuck out to me, going back to my first year of teaching and being not special ed-trained and having two out of my five classes being an inclusive classroom, I was never taught how to read an IEP and how important that was and how much that would have helped me my first year. And I love the fact that there's teachers who only have students for ten weeks that care enough to want to get as much as, out of it as they can.
So I think it was my, probably my second week as a board member, Joe pulled me aside and somehow we got talking about something. He goes, you know, if I could double my professional development budget, that would be awesome. So my question is over to Jamie and Tiffany. How did we do this year with, do you feel like we have enough funds there? Do we have to look at? Is that something that you guys continue to assess?
If you doubled his budget, I would like to know about it.
Because he'll never tell us.
Jamie wouldn't like to know about it.
So seriously, though, to Jen's point, if you've got people that are waitlisted for all of these things, you know, we, we try to work magic in a lot of ways. So just making sure that you guys, well, we certainly can't promise the moon. You know, those are things that, to Jen's point, we have a really dedicated group of teachers here and administrators. So making sure that we're, you know, providing those opportunities as best we can, I think, is important. And, you know, thank you, because it's a lot of work.
I would just say, it's to the capacity that we have the staff to instruct these offerings during the summer. Because that be, also becomes an issue. And we've got four learning coaches, the administrators have all taken on professional learning facilitation as well. So we only, and actually, you're right, but we did have, we only have three right now because we're having trouble finding. That's been delegated to Renee, yes. High standards. But, but, so, I mean, that, the money's not the issue. I mean, we'll probably increase a little bit, at least my proposal will be a little bit for this coming school year. But we still have funds available to do after-school professional learning for staff from now until June.
Joe, who determines the, the topics? Are these like interests presented to you guys from the teachers? Or do you guys just know that there's like a, a need based on what's coming down from the state? Like, how do you guys determine? Because there's a, a lot of variety there.
Yeah, it's, it's both. You know, I read the professional magazines right along with the teachers. So you kind of see, you start to see trends. So you see a lot of things happening around social justice, inequity of education, those types of things. And they tend to pop up in conversations. I, both Tony and I survey our departments and I always ask, you know, what are some things that you see as a real need? We always ask our learning coaches, what do you see or what are you hearing out in, when you're out in the buildings that teachers are needing? So we use that to help develop the topics. And also, some of them are state-driven. So that if we know something's coming down, then it may not necessarily be something that they're interested in, but we want to provide that opportunity. And again, the IEP came from a, a special area teacher. And she was so shocked that we actually did something. I said, yeah, we do listen to what you have to say. So, and it was a great move.
The other piece, a lot of this, at least the elementary level came from is, you know, we do send groups of teachers are on our leadership committees that go to BOCs to, you know, the ELA and math, science, social studies committees. And while there, we have time to meet with them. And they're, and they'll help stare, saying, we really need to get this back to the, you know, our department, our grade level, our team, you know, what can we do? How can we do that? And that's where a lot of these topics came out of, too.
Have you looked into, like, some of the topics on here seem like if you recorded the sessions that you taught, they'd be available offline for, I think in the one slide you mentioned a waitlist. Some of those topics seems like if you recorded them, people could watch them at any time and get most of the content. You can't do the interactive, obviously. But I, I think of them, some of them as like sessions that we sit through at the State School Board Convention where you could sit and listen to it and get a significant portion of the content out of it, although you can't ask the questions and stuff. It just may be a way to extend the reach of them instead of having somebody not be able to attend and not get any of the content. Just some thoughts, you don't have to answer it now, but just something to think about. Is that a way to make things more available or effective? Obviously, a lot of those titles, you have to be in the room. And it's interactive so much that, online. But some of them look like where you're learning about new apps, you may not have to be in the room to do that live. But just some thought.
And we do, we do offer, you know, at the end of every workshop, we do share all of our materials. So if a department, you know, for, for example, the ELA department, they'll have access to all of the materials that we used for the books, the books in action. So if they weren't there. So we do, we do share our materials, but we don't necessarily tape anything. But that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you, guys. Great job.
Thank you.
We'll get you that money tomorrow. Okay, so last, certainly not least, we're going to have a presentation from Rocco. We're going to get an update on Liberty Resources. And really, we're a little behind here. So they're going to report out from last school year. And then we'll talk about moving forward. So your show, guys.
Hi, I'd like to introduce to everyone Kimberly Martin. Kimberly is Liberty Resources' School-Based Program Manager. She took over in that role from Alicia Clifford last year. And Kimberly's going to talk tonight about our partnership with Liberty Resources. And this is now our, going on our third year with, with that partnership. And so I'm going to turn it over to Kimberly.
Hi. So I wanted to, with the first report, talk about the, the growth that we've had from last school year. So you can see in the 2017, 2018, we were open at three schools. And we opened at two new schools for the 2018, 2019 school year, and also added a split therapist between Dirgy and Baker. So that added three more full-time caseloads. And so you can see the growth that we had in open cases, went from seventy to one hundred and sixty-four active clients, and then a referral of a hundred and eight to a hundred and fifty-nine. So we were able to grow in, in that way at the caseload size. We can see between twenty-eight to thirty clients for each full-time therapist at a school. And so Van Buren and Eldon were at capacity, which means that they received enough referral for students to fill their caseload. Ray is at twenty-one. And the only reason for that is that our therapist there transitions, her summer's off, she's been grandfathered into that, she's been working for our agency for a while. And so she's going to be growing her caseload back up now that she's back at the school for the school year. All cases get covered during the summer. And then at Dirgy, their, Amy's caseload was at twenty-eight, which is a full caseload. And then Melanie's was at sixteen because she's split. And then there's thirteen open at Baker on Amy's caseload and twenty-six on Melanie's. And then when we look at...
There's a question, I just have to stop you because I, it's getting late. You said twenty-eight is the caseload?
Twenty-eight to thirty. So they'll look to see...
I thought it was thirty to thirty-two.
So what they, so twenty-eight is our expected caseload numbers. But sometimes kids aren't seen every week, or they happen to not be there. And so we can up the caseload depending on the ability and the flexibility of therapists. Sometimes therapists up their caseload to thirty-two. That, we'll see that more often in middle schools and high schools because they're not, not at school as regularly as you'll see in elementary schools. Any other questions about that part?
Are the therapists there every day?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? They're not, so the students aren't there?
Yeah. So you'll see that attendance shifts a lot more as kids move into the higher grades. And so therapists will add more onto their caseload to make up for, if they have, they happen to not be able to see a kid one week. They flex that way.
So, so this is such a great program that obviously we'd like to involve as many students as we possibly can in this. And right now, you know, a hundred sixty-four students out of five thousand students is a really teeny-tiny, you know, percentage of students who are able to participate. And I can see, you know, you're not able to take even all of your referrals.
Yeah.
So what I'm struggling with is that if there's nine periods in a day, and you have one period for lunch, that's eight periods, right?
Yeah.
And eight times five is forty. So why is the caseload twenty-eight?
So there's a lot of components to the program that aren't necessarily the direct case hours. We have to do treatment planning. We have to do outreach to parents in regards to if the treatment plan involves family work. We do a lot of stuff out in the community. There's planning for session. There's supervision. There's training appointments that take them out of the school. So there's things that are added into a forty-hour schedule that aren't necessarily face-to-face contact with a client.
And, and you have to see every student every week?
So that's what the, when you do individual assessment, you'll assess where kids' needs are at. They typically start at weekly. And then as kids have been in the program longer and they're graduating towards successful discharge, that's when therapists will meet with the school staff, they'll meet with the client and their families to make a decision about changing the frequency of how often they're seen.
So you may not see, you may not just impact twenty-eight students, but if you're able to, you know, rotate some students off and then rotate some on, that expands. So what you're reporting here is really just how many students are being actively managed right now. Got it? Okay.
Yep. You're welcome.
So what happens to the, the referrals that you can't take on into the caseload?
So sometimes we get referrals when there's spots open to, to open. And they don't pan out. Some of the reasons for that are that families decide to go other options. Or they may have an insurance that we don't par with. We'll work with those families, our benefit specialists will work with those families to see if there's any other insurance options for them. We're pretty active at looking at all the options available for families. But sometimes there isn't an option that we can work with. And that may close out a referral. And then when we get to capacity, we'll often communicate with the school's support team, the people that are processing our referrals to say, we're, we're starting a waitlist. And so we work with the team member at the school to keep track of a waitlist. And then as cases discharge or as people opt out, they will, will have more space to open another referral. So it's kind of a team effort with the school referral sources to waitlist and then prioritize. If, if a kid, we happen to get a referral on the waitlist, but their risk level is higher, they may be prioritized to open before someone else that was on a waitlist.
That was another way to think about it. If we were to double, since the referrals and the clients are about the same, if we were to double the amount of counselors, we'd meet our full need of what we're seeing in the schools. Is that a way to think about it?
So you're saying if you had more than one therapist in a school?
Yeah. Since, since they're the, basically the same number, it seems like we'd have to double the number of counselors to meet the actual need. Because referrals and clients are basically the total sum of people who need the services.
The services.
The services. Is that a way to think about it?
Um, for the most part, I think, for the most part, when we get a referral, there's been a pretty good assessment that there's a need for mental health. We then meet, meet with the families and the kids to determine whether or not they meet the criteria for mental health. There's been a couple times where clients have been screened out because they haven't met the criteria. They may be having behaviors in the school, but they're, it's not mental health-related. So that's also an aspect that may be a reason why we see a referral, but then we, they're not an open case. But for the most part, I want to say, on average, we see about four percent of the school population is having mental health needs. I'm not sure specifically for Baldwinsville, but that's what we've seen sort of across the board in schools, has been roughly around four percent. the board in schools, has been roughly around 4%. So I just wanted to comment on the 2019, 2020, like, sort of projected referral availability is that Van Buren was currently at an active 20 clients at the start of the school year because 10 of her clients moved up to Ray. And so she'll be able to take another eight to 10 referrals. And then Eldon only had one student move up to Ray, and so she stayed pretty stable. So because she's at 28 right now, I put two as a projected to see when she opened, you know, as she's working with those 28 students, she'll be able to attest if she has room on, on her caseload to open two more. Ray is projected to have, to be able to take another 11 to 13 referrals. At Dergie, Melanie, we have two Melanies at Dergie. Melanie Beecham maintained about half of her caseload, and so she'll be able to open 12 to 14 referrals. Melanie Proper is maintaining six of her students at Dergie because a majority of hers moved up to 10th grade. So because she's split between the two schools, instead of those students having to change therapists, she remains consistent for them, and so she'll be having 25 students at Baker. And so how will even that out for the schools is that as Melanie Proper discharges students, she'll, she'll open referrals at Dergie. But both schools have the availability to, for someone at the school to open referrals, so they're not, they don't have to waitlist students, students because of caseloads right now. So Amy at Baker will be able to take open referrals, and Melanie Beecham at Dergie will be able to open referrals.
Just, just real quick, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. So if the caseload, let's say is 30, okay?
Yep.
And you start the school year and they have 15, what is that counselor doing the rest of the time? Because I know they're assigned to us in this school, but I know that's not what happens, so I want to hear what you said.
So, so you're saying that if they're, they don't have a full caseload? Yes. So they're actively working with the support team at the school to identify students. They're also looking to see if we had kids over the summer on the waitlist. We oftentimes get referrals from the hospital for hospital discharges. We'll have parents call us directly and fill out referrals, and so we do have waitlists during the summer. And so we'll work with the support team at the schools to prioritize, and then they will, they'll do intake. They also will, during that time, do collateral contacts in the school. So they'll schedule meetings with the teachers, they'll attend any, like, client-specific meetings at the school. So that could be CSE meetings, that could be a parent concern meeting, those types of things. They're, they're actively involved with the kids that are open, so they aren't necessarily just doing that individual work, they will integrate with the school support team.
Do they work just, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Do they work just the school day, or do they, are they available after the school day?
Um, it depends. So the expected hours are whatever meets the students' needs. So if a caseload can be seen every day at school and the families that need that family work component are able to work during the school hours, those are the hours they work and as long as they hit 40 hours a week. If a, a client needs family work and their family works and they can't be seen until after hours, the therapists are expected to shift their schedule in order to be able to meet with those parents after school. So it really is on an individual basis of what the needs are of the client, and our therapists are expected to meet those needs.
And they also, just to add to that, work not just the school calendar, but they, they work at a, a regular calendar, so during vacations, holidays, summer, students that are, for our students, yeah. So they, they continue services over holiday breaks and, and summer services also.
We actually, we actually encourage that sort of difference in schedule so that the kids continue to receive support during holiday breaks and especially over the summer when there's a large gap from when they're in school, because we find that that's the time that the families have the least amount of support.
What is in place to help a student promote the continuity when they move up from elementary to Ray, and Ray to Dergie, Dergie to Baker, and they get a new counselor?
Yeah.
So what is in place to keep things moving forward smoothly for that child?
So we have to do treatment plans every 90 days, and they're documented goals that therapists make with the student. So they're, it's their therapy goals that they have consented to and their parents have signed off on. And so that is a, a document that moves with a student as they move up. We also document progress notes. And so what's really nice here in Baldwensville is that because one agency is serving all of these schools, they're all our employees, and so they can do transition sessions. And so we work really hard for the therapists to meet together to transfer these students, make sure that students are feeling comfortable. Sometimes our kids with high anxiety around change and transition will need more than one transfer session, and so we'll find that our therapists will push into the new school and help them acclimate to the new school. We, we do, we focus on that pretty extensively to make sure that kids are feeling comfortable and safe with that change.
That, this is a perfect segue. So, because that's a great question, because you always want continuity, right, from the transition that we have in Beville. So we have three elementary schools that don't have this program.
Yes.
And you'll see next year, for the next school year, we'll be proposing to the board to add three more to the three elementary schools. Jamie Crinney, don't worry, it's coming out of Rocko's budget. We have, I think we're gonna do it with some grant money, but we already have it all set, ready to roll, to have those schools outfitted. Because they do need them, and they've been asking for them, it's just a matter of trying to work with, with Liberty Resources so they have the counselors. A lot of schools are, are doing this, and they didn't have the counselors at the time, and it just wasn't, you know, we were hiring social workers, we try and do different things at a time, so.
So are there kids now at those schools that need help and nobody's?
No, when we hire, well, let me let you answer that, because the understanding I had, and I don't want to speak out of turn, was that those kids, so like, we have a counselor of Van Buren and Eldon, not Mac Reynolds or, or Palmer. But if a student needed supports in those schools, we made arrangements with Dana to have them transported to get the support. Is that, I mean, that's what we did with the Ray kids.
Yeah, we, we did try to make that arrangement, but it was on a rare exception for, for a kid. But for the most part, kids that are in buildings currently that don't have a school-based mental health therapist in it, you know, would have to seek those supports outside of school, with the families getting them and making those arrangements.
We, we tried to bridge some of that too for those schools this summer with the schools as the kids were transition, moving up to Ray, for the therapists or the social workers, I should say, at those elementary schools that we're not in, to identify students that they knew would need our services and pre-fill out referrals for us. So we had a wait, we have, we have a waitlist ready to go at Ray that we're now processing for Nicole to open, that were students that social workers at the elementary schools identified for us. So that, that helped with early detection at Ray because the staff there wouldn't have known those students as well as the previous workers. I thought that worked really well this year. For the unique clients served, this addresses some of that with people, with kids being discharged or maybe not currently being active. This highlights brand-new referrals that resulted in being admitted and opened. And so this accounts for every new referral we received for the 2018, 2019 school year that we opened. So Baker had 29 new clients opened, and so that doesn't count the clients that continued services from the previous year. These were brand-new students that we served for the 2018, 2019 school year. Dergie had 18 new clients served. Eldon had 30 because they were a brand-new school site. And Ray had 17 new, unique clients served. Again, Van Buren had 30 because they were a new school site.
So none of these were seen at any of the others? These are all brand-new, not Liberty clients?
Previously.
In any school previously?
Yes. They were brand-new, yep. We got a referral right from the start, we opened them, and then, so they, they weren't, they hadn't transferred up, they hadn't been opened or served at all the, the previous school year.
I'm just gonna say, so I was at Liberty and Brownell Center when they started, when they took over from OPCC. And I just have to say, the fact that you have 30 students on your caseload, given the OMH requirements and the collateral work and all of those things that you have to do, I know sometimes we think about, wow, you should be able to see more, you, you should be able to see more people, but, you know, given all of the family work and things that you're doing, I know it's a lot. And you guys really offer a great service, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I actually wanted to share some feedback that I got from the staff that works in the school buildings about the district and the schools that they're in. I asked them to, to share some feedback that they wanted to share with you guys. My staff was able to say that as a district, you guys are very supportive of mental health services, you're very aware of social, emotional impact on learning, you do great adjusting to meet the needs of students and provide necessary training for teachers and staff. They highlighted that there was collaborative problem solving, restorative practice, CPI trauma, being, becoming trauma-informed schools. They said that the school has been, so I didn't identify specifically which schools, but they said that the schools that they were in have been open and receptive to working together with our staff and partnering. Staff collaborate on treatment, they communicate regarding students, they implement the interventions that are suggested, they try strategies, they do all that they can to help students be successful. The teachers go above and beyond and are invested in forming positive relationships with their students. One of the schools offers a monthly homework help program that my staff had said fostered really good home and school connection, which they had seen positively impact the clients that they were working with. They said that the school teams have been welcoming, have made our staff feel like one of their own throughout their entire time there. From their first day, the team was clearly open and receptive to mental health services being in their building, they embraced it, they make us feel like a part of the team. They highlighted that the referral process runs very smoothly, the schools have been very proactive in taking this task on, and they keep it very organized. The schools have been very supportive in understanding of their role as a therapist. One of our therapists is split between two schools. She said that that can sometimes be a challenge because she's not always there when problems arise with her student and, and one of the other schools. And so the staff has worked really hard to communicate with her when she's not on site. They, they're great about emailing her. If, if someone needs to be seen, she's able to get that message and go over to the other building to see a student, so she's been flexible in that way. She said the school's very gracious about space, supplies, always willing to help, make them feel comfortable and have what they need. They, the staff highlighted that over the summer, there was a student death, and the counseling staff had made sure to notify our therapist right away. And they, they were then able to check in on their clients who they knew that would be very, impact quite a few of them, and so they were very immediately able to offer the support to their clients because of that communication. I wanted to share a specific success story that one of my staff shared. She was referred a student to the school identified needing to fill out a referral for after he had a medical emergency that ended up, he was hospitalized. His mom and dad had come into the school seeking support, the counselor had filled out a referral for our programs. The student had been involved in mental health services previously and had not engaged, and so had been discharged from a couple different places. Mom and dad were kind of expecting the same result here and had been pretty open with our staff that that was probably going to be the expected outcome. But during the first meeting in the school one-on-one, he was very polite, very focused on how to get out of treatment, how to not be there. So kind of some of the stuff that they had expected. He was struggling with an eating disorder, having academic difficulties, and then really started to engage in treatment. He made a connection with our staff, he started seeing some of the benefits of engaging in treatment and having this sort of relationship in school that was just his own. And so he never misses an appointment. During the summer, he drove himself to the library regularly for session. He talks about often how helpful it's been. He's gained incredible insight over his diagnosis. He shares very openly in session. He's been able to acquire a part-time job, he's motivated to return to school, he's shifted into having positive thinking, showing a new interest in being social and making new friends. He was able to highlight that school-based therapy has felt different than when his parents had to bring him into the clinic and were often, you know, talking to his therapist, and he feels like this is more his own and more private, and he gets to have a little more control over what's shared with his parents. He has been working on his relationship with his parents and chose to attend a week-long family camping trip this summer, which he originally was refusing to attend, and was able to come back and say that it was a positive healing experience for him and left him feeling more connected to his parents than he'd ever felt before. And he's just showing a lot of responsibility with, you know, making this his own and being, you know, responsible for his mental health treatment. So he went, this, I'm, basically, this was just a shift in a kid that was having a lot of problems and not utilizing any supports to having this relationship that's really helped him be healthy and successful.
I had a quick question, you mentioned the library. Do you do summer counseling sessions at the library?
So we do them wherever kids want to do them, as long as they are confidential. And so a lot of times we'll utilize spaces in the community that have a separate space.
So you have a good private place there where you can do that?
Yep, definitely. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you guys, great job. Appreciate you coming and actually staying this late. Let you go first.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Approved textbook adoption request to Baker High School Spanish classes and Dergie Junior High School Social Studies classes pursuant to the attached, do I have a motion? Matt, Jeff? Joe, did you want to talk about this at all?
Not unless there's questions. We did last time.
I say, all those in favor?
Would you like me to read it in Spanish?
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carried 9-0. Bid number 363 for visual equipment, resolved, the Board of Education approved bid number 383 audiovisual pursuant to the attached. Do we have a motion? Jeff, Jim? Any questions?
Is this, is this for the training room in the Transportation Center, or is this another location? I didn't, I missed that and I didn't see it.
Yep, the equipment in this bid is for the new Transportation Center for the upstairs conference rooms, yep.
Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed, carried nine zero. Resolved, the Board of Education accept the 2018-2019 internal auto of the Baldwinsville Central School District's Information Technology completed by Baradeo and Company, LLP. Do I have a motion? Matt? Jim? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, carried nine zero. Resolved, the Board of Education approved the Baldwinsville Central School District's Emergency Management Plan/Save Plan pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim, Jeff, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, carried nine zero. Disposal of surplus equipment. Resolved, the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus materials and equipment pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jeff, Matt, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, carried nine zero. Resolved, the Board of Education approved the contract with the New York State United Teachers Association regarding Ms. Elizabeth Chetney's participation in the New York State Teachers Retirement System Board of Trustees pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jeff? Jim?
Joan, I would like to move that we table this for exec and come out and vote on it later tonight.
We have a motion to table it, we have a second. Matt, second it?
Is this, is this something we can talk about in exec, according to the rules of exec?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes. All those in favor tabling? Opposed? I guess it's carried nine zero. So F will be tabled? Okay. Resolved, the Board of Education approved the contract agreement between the Baldwinsville Central School District and the Underdog County Sheriff's Department for School Resource Officer Services from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020 pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion?
Can I interrupt you, please?
Yes.
I'd like somebody to propose to table this until the next board meeting. And here's the reason why. We just got the attachment on the back that contract just showed up the last couple days. And I had a visit from, a representative from the Sheriff's Department today. When we originally agreed to buy the three SROs from the county, it didn't include a $45,000 cost per vehicle. That's a complete surprise to Matt and I. So this is in a mid-year kind of thing. So if I budget for the three people and then throw the 45 in there, so. I'm in the process of trying to negotiate that to be a different number with the county. Because, you know, like I said to the guy, I said, my signature's been on the contract for 10 years, our business office address. You would think if you're going to change something that major, that's a 15% increase in the cost of that contract. You would send it to me so we could have a discussion about it. So that came out of the sky, so. So he's going to go back to his people and talk to the finance people and talk to his captain about, you know, well, let's do it for next year. In other words, they waived the magic one, said we're going to do every SRO that's going, every school in the county, they're going to have to pay for a car. Well, that's okay if they tell us about it, so there's a little misunderstood. Pardon? I mean, this is, so anyway.
But wait, don't we pay for?
Pardon?
We pay for a car from the village, right?
Well, we haven't received that contract yet, but we have had a conversation for six months about the car with the village.
No, 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 I agree. I agree that we should, yeah, they can't just throw it in regardless, but we do pay for a vehicle in the village contract.
So I just, what I'd like to do is table it until the October 7 meeting, and hopefully between then and now, we'll have cut a deal that's different than the 45,000.
Oh, can I have a motion to table from somebody?
I'll move, I'll move. Board meeting, right.
Kim, well, Kim and Brian did it already. They beat you to it. That shoulder, Jen.
All right, thank you.
It affects everything.
You got to vote on that?
We have a motion on the table too, yes.
Table it.
Kim and, Kim and Brian, the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried nine zero.
Thank you.
So we're down to Board Roundtable. So we talked before about Board Handbook, she had a lot of samples to go from. Did we want to put a committee together about developing a board? Manual handbook, whatever you want to call it, or what does the board want to do?
I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm not volunteering for it. But I do think based on, I think it would be helpful. Nope, not it. Not it. No, I do think it makes a lot of sense. And I think some of the, some of the examples that we've seen, I think, would be helpful. And, you know, obviously, as we've talked, it's, you know, it's not black and white. There's always going to be gray, but to have some of those things put in place makes a lot of sense.
Anybody else?
I would agree with Kim. I think it's necessary. I think it will help at least guide us and just have those conversations as to how we want things to go so we can operate and be functional. I would volunteer on top of everything else. Why not?
So if anybody else thinks about it and wants to do it, or they want to volunteer to help now?
Does everyone want to do it? I guess we probably need to ask that firstly.
Well, yeah, I, I got the general consensus before, but does everyone think it would be a valuable tool? Is there anybody that doesn't think it would be a valuable tool? Okay, I think that kind of answers it. So we'll put something together. The one thing I just want to check, I think we just want to have our own. I think we talked about like slapping our name on some of them, but I think what we have to do is go through them. Because I also don't want to look like we're plagiarizing or copyright infringement or anything like that as well. I just want, I just want to make sure we're covered.
I would agree with that. I always get nervous when I hear that, you know, just put our name on it. And I just think that we need to go through our own thought process. We may use some of the stuff, but we need to think about the things that we've encountered. And, you know, they may have it in there for completely other reasons. We just need to talk through each section, I would think.
So we may blindly draw names out of a hat. Or, or we could give it to the Policy Committee.
What's their, what's their timeline on it?
I would, I would say, I would hope by the end of the year we'd have something. I mean, it's not like we want it yesterday. I think by the end of the year, don't you think?
I think that that would be a good board goal to, you know, have some benchmarks out the year with the end goal by the end of the year so we can use it for next year.
Well, probably like around May, around budget vote time.
Something like that. You interested, Matt? Yeah?
I'm not a member.
Don't, don't tell my wife.
We should probably have a new board member on it too, since they're the closest to all this stuff. Just an idea.
Yep.
Brian's going to jump in here.
Yeah. I'll definitely volunteer for it.
You got us like that last week. Last time you got us like that, the new.
Brian, I'm looking at it as a positive because you've just gone through all of this. Wouldn't it have been nice if you knew this from the beginning? I'm sure you have a lot of input.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll put something together anyway. We'll get enough people to do it. And we may get people to do it that don't want to do it, whether they like it or not. So there will be, that will, and then when we do our goals discussion, I think that will end up being one of our goals for this year.
Yeah, I don't think we're, I don't think that we're unique. I was looking at the, the School Board Association resolutions, and actually, one of them is to require Board President and Vice President training for new people that are becoming, going into those roles. So I think what we're experiencing is very similar to what everybody else is. So I thought that was great, so.
Okay, so I guess that, we will, we will set that as one of our goals, and we will move forward with it. So we need a motion for executive session here. Resolved, the Board of Education, enter into executive session to discuss employment of particular individuals. Do I have a motion? Jeff, second? All in favor? All opposed, carried nine zero.